Good evening and welcome to the meeting of the full St. Peter School Board. It's Monday, August 21st, 2023, and we are in the St. Peter Community Center Governor's Room. It is 6:30 PM. We will call the meeting to order. If anyone in the audience would care to speak, make sure you get your name to Sarah and she'll let us know. We'll get things started with the questions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We should consider and adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Wow. We are ready. All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda is adopted. Do we have any requests to speak? Okay, awesome. We need to approve the consent agenda, which you have in your board packet. If there are any things that you would like to speak to or pull out for consideration to discuss, please let me know.
I so move the consent agenda as written.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to the consent agenda. Mrs. Ingeldinger?
Yeah, we just have a recent graduate. Samantha Gruy has met all of the requirements set forth by the state of Minnesota and the school board.
Congrats Samantha.
Yeah, congrats to her.
That's awesome.
Thanks.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other items to discuss? Proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Consent agenda is approved. Move into our action items. The first up is consider updating the student activities bank signer at Hometown Bank. Fun one.
It is, and we've been doing a few of these as we've had people move into new positions. And so the new assistant for the activities department is Zoe Haugan. Thank you. And she will be a new signer for that account.
This is a typical action we take based on who's a staff member in that office?
Absolutely.
Make a motion to approve Zoe Haugan as signer for the student activities account?
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? So we have a motion and a second to approve Zoe Haugan as a signer for the activities account with Hometown Bank. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Congrats Zoe. Start spending. Item number two is considering the approval of superintendent evaluation summary. We conducted our evaluation of Superintendent Gronseth. We completed the evaluation process in a closed session on July 17th. And then the summary of that evaluation is in the packet. We, in brief summary, all members of the school board contributed to the evaluation by providing individual feedback related to Superintendent Gronseth's progress and performance on each of the goals and tactics developed by the superintendent and the board during the evaluation review at the closed special meeting of the board on July 17th. Nope?
I don't think it was on July 17th because I was on vacation. And I was not on vacation on July 17th.
July 26th.
July 26th. Yeah.
Yeah, so the letter is correct, sorry. July 26th, you Superintendent Gronseth and all present board members had an opportunity to review the feedback together and had a conversation about your performance. The board rated Superintendent Gronseth's performance as professional to exemplary in all of the goal areas, and overall feedback was favorable, positive, and constructive. So that is the summary that would be approved.
Thank you. It's always good to get feedback and I look forward to setting the goals for the coming year and having conversations about those as well.
Great. And then when approved, the letter would go into your personnel file?
Correct.
On record with the district.
Thank you very much Superintendent Gronseth and Chair Potts. I enthusiastically make a motion to approve the superintendent evaluation summary.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
As I stated, I wasn't there because I was on vacation, but I will say that it's been fun to watch your progress. I know you came in at pretty much the worst possible time. I would imagine the superintendent could come in to the district and it's been fun to watch you grow as a superintendent, I guess, through that. So, since I wasn't there to drill you a little bit.
Any other discussion? We will proceed to vote. All those in favor approving the summary signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Item number three, consider policies with legislative requirements for approval with one reading.
Well, as we've said several times, this past legislative session has had more statutory changes than anyone can remember. I know that the lobbyists from both MSBA and MASAA said they have, in their 30 years of lobbying, have never seen this number of changes come through. And with that, just about every day now, we get updates from MDE as they interpret what exactly these laws mean for us. And MSBA is in turn modifying the model policies so that we're following those statutes. So the changes that have been made in equal educational opportunity, corporal punishment and prone restraints, protection and policy of pupil records, student medication, overdose medication, and the school meals policy are all part of statutory changes. We are in the process of implementing these in our schools and making sure that we are training staff on the new practices that go along with each of these.
So what is it that the resource officers are upset with? The police unions and so forth have come up with in far as, it's not the prone restraint, is it?
It is. It is. So, and we have not heard from the St. Peter Police Department, but I know in other areas of the state, this has come up. It is the prone restraint. The governor did come out and clarify that that did not apply to resource officers when...
Break up fights?
Yeah, well, when there's a danger of someone hurting themselves or others. So if the police are involved with that situation, the police operate by their own training and standards.
Because when I was looking at some of the definitions in that, talking about wrapping your arms around someone, I would assume that would be one of the ways you have to, to break up a fight.
The main one that is restricted is a prone restraint, so being face down on the floor with all, you know, arms and legs out. So that is the one that was changed specifically in the statute.
That and a headlock.
Yeah, or any pressure on the neck. Most of our staff, especially our special education staff, go through what is called CPI training. And that gives our staff specific ways of doing holds and restraining students that are safe for both the staff member and the students. Prone restraints aren't something that we wouldn't typically be doing that anyway, so.
Was there some legislation that came out regarding discipline and recess? And can you talk me through that?
Yes, so this is specific to kindergarten through third grade. That does not allow suspension without first using non-exclusionary discipline strategies. So the first answer can't be suspension. So there's counseling, there's conferencing with parents, there's counseling the students, there's problem solving between students. All those are ways that we would typically be trying anyway. We try not to suspend students at all. However, when there is a danger to oneself or others, sometimes suspension is the best plan so that we can bring families in and bring students back in with a plan for them to make wiser choices and to be safe for themselves and for others. So while it is pretty specific that you can't do it, there is an exception if they are in danger or they're putting others in danger.
I was wondering about recess. Can you not withhold recess?
Correct. So...
Because I thought that was interesting.
And again, there's exceptions to all of this as we're digging in. So what that's referring to is mainly withholding recess for something that has nothing to do with recess. So you didn't finish your homework, so you're not going out for lunch. Or something that happens in the classroom and using the withholding recess as a punishment for something else. If there's something going on on the playground where they're not being safe or others aren't being safe, that doesn't mean that they're not going to have a timeout or have to come in if they're not being safe.
Oh, boy.
Well, basically, all these changes are mandates from legislation.
Right, and any of the changes that were included in the red lines are directly from the statutory language. The overdose medication, we had made those changes last year when it became acceptable. And so now there's a new policy just for that, so we took it out of our old policy and had the new policy. But it's not a change in our practice from what we talked about last year. It's just a change in the language. And then, of course, the school meals policy, now that we are going to free meals for all students, one breakfast, one lunch, with the option to purchase a second entree. That language is changed as well. As a side note, and I'll probably talk about it again later, we do still have to fill out the free and reduced price lunch forms, and I'll explain why a little bit later, but so those are still in there.
I move that we accept these policies that require, with legislative requirements for one reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion before we vote?
There's only one thing that I didn't talk about that I intended to, and that was the protection and privacy of pupil records. We're not changing what we consider directory information. We're keeping it the same. The one change is that the statute now says that military can have access to addresses, parents' names, parents' address, phone numbers. And those aren't typically included in our directory information, but the military does have access to that once a student turns 18.
Yeah, because it appeared that the state went more restrictive than the federal.
Yep.
And so we have to abide by the state.
Well, and ours is more restrictive than the state. We don't give out student addresses, parents' names, phone numbers. If we did include that in directory information, then anyone who walked in could ask for, I want the names, phone numbers, and parents of every student in your school, and we would have to hand it over. So we restrict that information.
So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The policies with legislative requirements have been approved with one reading. Thank you. Item number four, consider adoption of handbooks for 2022, 2020, yep, you know, 2023, 2024. Must be time for a new year. All the new handbooks.
I'm up here tonight to ask for forgiveness and admit that I submitted the incorrect draft the first time that Sarah requested it, so you will notice if you look at the updated one. I believe she's updated it in there. Two really important things that would have confused, should have confused all of you after a close reading, I'm sure, are the graduation requirements that were approved last year. Good job, Tracy. So those have been updated to reflect our new graduation requirements. And the other one that might be of interest to people if they saw the old draft and we're also on the education committee or the updates to our co-curricular fees. My apologies.
And I'm here just to give a general overview of the changes to the handbooks this year. So the majority of the changes were really related to policy. As you know, handbooks are a school's ways to outline policy in ways that parents and students can understand. And through policy, recent policy revisions, the board has adopted MSBA model policies. So the timing was right for us to take a look at MSBA's model handbook and kind of use it as a format or as a draft for us. The benefits of that are the model handbook outlines policies that are required by statute and by our district policy that need to be in that handbook and what we found that there were some that we were missing previous to this. So those are outlined in the memo that was shared, but we added 10 sections, those sections very quickly. We added a section on complaints, non-discrimination, notice of violent behaviors by students, distribution of non-school-sponsored materials on school premises, student records, student surveys, parents' right to know, drug-free school workplace, tobacco-free schools, and immunizations to those handbooks so that they are now compliant with statute and policy.
The Ashwell Learning Academy had two additional changes, and that's really just based on our unique population and also the changing population. As you recall, about two years ago, we moved from a children's treatment center to a psychiatric residential treatment center, and there has been a big difference in our student clientele. So as a result of persistent struggles with elopement, kids leaving school campus, we wanted to further define the process for when that happened. Our prior policy just kind of said if a student leaves, we'll make a plan for safe return, but we really needed to have what that plan was going to be because it's really almost all of our students struggle with that right now. So it just outlines who's going to follow the student, how the communication is going to happen, just so that we are making sure that everybody is safe from beginning to end of that situation. We also further clarified our process for when the LEOA Hoffman Center staff are checking students out of the building for appointments, things like that. That's unique to our building. It's not parents that are sending kids out. It's people from this third party, so we just needed to clarify that as well.
I have a question. So what is the procedure? Because it's all online now, right? Kids don't get a hard copy of handbooks anymore?
Correct. They do get, we do have a stack available for our handbook meetings that we have at the beginning of the year. I believe it's the same at least middle school and high school. Either the dean of students or myself has class meetings, and we go over the highlights and any changes. They're given a link to go to the updated handbook, and then there's a stack of just copies made in the building.
And at the middle school, the first weekly memo that goes out has a link to it and encourages all students and parents to read it thoroughly.
We do hard copies at Rock Bend and Ashwell, but we have a different population and a smaller group of students. We also share the link.
Well, it's nice to know that you're having your meetings and there are hard copies available.
Pretty exciting meetings.
If you had any, for lack of a better term, jailhouse lawyers.
Right, it can be.
Yeah.
Yep.
And at the elementary, you...
Same thing. So the first message that goes out to families has a link to it and they have hard copies. And on the website.
So this is an action item?
I would move that we adopt the handbook as presented for the 23-24 school year.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional conversation, questions?
I would like to say thank you to all of you for the work because not only is the policy committee having to deal with all this new legislation, but you guys had to deal with it and decide how to make it more palatable for students or understandable or anything, and you did a great job.
Any other discussion on this? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Handbooks have been adopted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is the, considering approval to changes to the 2023-2024 mobile device handbook.
Another handbook. It's so exciting. Indeed. There is just one change that was made to this year's mobile device handbook. It is on the last page pertaining to fees for damage. And because at the high school, we are switching from iPads to touchscreen Chromebooks. The touchscreen Chromebooks, if they crack the screen, costs more to replace than a cracked iPad screen, and so that has been added. And the first occurrence would be, with the maintenance plan, would be $25. Additional occurrences, please be careful with your Chromebooks, are $40 for each additional occurrence. If you do not have the maintenance plan, it's $80 for a cracked screen. I can tell you, I've had my touchscreen Chromebook for several years without a cracked screen, so if you take care of them, that should not happen.
Says the adult.
Although I should be talking to Mrs. Ingeldinger about such things.
How much is the...
Not that you cracked your screen, but...
How much is the mobile device protection plan? I think it's in here, isn't it?
It is in here.
Oh, $25, right?
Yep.
Seems like a steal of a deal.
Yes, it is.
You must cover lots of things here.
And we have staff members that amaze me with their ability to fix things and replace screens and keyboards and anything else that could happen to those.
Do we have sense, I know Mr. Sorbo's not here, but I mean, do we have a sense of damages incurred each year and charged? You know, like...
He would probably be able to just say that right off the top of his head, but...
I think, I'm surprised it's not more.
Yeah, okay.
Like, and not that I hear about every single one of them, but it's really, from what I hear, it's a handful.
Yeah, okay.
The number one thing that I hear about is students who fall asleep with it, and then it falls on the floor, and they wake up and step on it.
I can tell you that yes, screens do crack.
Well, I hope Mr. Gronseth doesn't drop his tomorrow.
Well, I mean, and even if you have the maintenance plan, it covers like a charger. For the first one, it's just a free replacement, you know?
Right. So this is also an action item?
I'll make a motion to approve the changes to the 23-24 mobile device handbook.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Changes have been approved for the 2023-2024 mobile device handbook. We are now on to our information items. First up is recommended adult meal and second entree prices for this year. Ms. Gracia?
All right, I can cover this. So every year, we are required to bring student and adult meal prices to the board. Obviously, we don't have to bring student meal prices to the board this year with the Minnesota free meals for the students. So we are bringing the adult meal prices. MDE establishes rates every year based on federal guidelines, and school districts have to be at or above those rates. So for the adult meal prices, St. Peter was 10 cents above the adult meal rate for breakfast and at the rate MDE set for lunch. So we are going to keep our same adult meal price rates for 23-24 as we had last year. And one thing to note is that if students receive a second meal, so not just a second entree, but a whole second tray, they do get charged these adult meal rates. So that's one thing to keep in mind. And then we are, we did also evaluate our second entree price, so that's if they want a second hamburger or a second slice of pizza. And we have to ensure that we are not subsidizing that cost with state or federal food service funds. And so we have not increased the second entree price in over five years. So we talked to our food service director, and she had made a recommendation, and we ran some numbers just to ensure that we were complying with that, and so the recommendation was to increase both of those by 50 cents to make sure that we were still charging a reasonable price, but ensuring that we were not using those state and federal funds to offset the cost of that. So those are our new rates for 23 and 24. Are there any questions?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, Megan.
As far as like evaluating those prices for the entree, like mighty honest devils and all, is that just something like... Do they like audit us every so often about that, or you kind of know what I'm saying? Like, it's just a fund we're doing very, very well in and...
It is. And with everything that has happened in the state and in recent times with food service and the federal government, audits are far more common in food service departments. And I think that, I suspect that there would be many audits this year with the state and federal government just hiring, I can't remember how many auditors, but it was a lot, so.
Cool. Well, I'm glad someone's on tap.
Just making sure we're following the rules.
I mean, it's just the different things I think about, so, cool.
Info item number two, first reading of revisions to the policy manual.
Janet, do you want to come down and talk about...
Sorry, I'm hoping on that I know any of that I know.
So the policy committee and the education committee have both had discussions around this because there's a lot of crossover. Principal Sakura has been instrumental in bringing these recommendations to us, so why don't you go ahead?
Well, I also further wanted to confuse the net of your handbook for next year, just to revise it again.
Right.
So I, as a former school counselor, working with students on credit recovery planning, course recovery when courses are failed, you know, you get a different perspective on what our students today are facing, particularly during and after the COVID pandemic. And so, you know, we look at as a school district, four-year, five-year, six-year, seven-year graduation rates. And one of the things I was noticing was that there wasn't a huge increase of students coming back to finish if they didn't finish right at that four-year mark. And just through working with students and talking with families and talking with kids about why they weren't finishing if they didn't cross the stage on that one date, it really was a feeling of hopelessness, that the end goal was just too far away. I don't think a lot of people know that the state of Minnesota has a minimum credit requirement of 21.5, and our district sits at 27. And that really is a product of having so many great electives and choice opportunities for our kids and the way that we have our schedule. It's not a bad thing. But for kids that fail multiple courses, required courses, it becomes a monumental challenge. And so in looking at our graduation rates and also the students that I now serve at the Ashwell Learning Academy and Rock Bend and in our credit recovery programs, I just thought there has to be a way for us to be more flexible. And so the MDE defines alternative education, our state-approved... And so the MDE defines alternative education, our state-approved alternative programs, as schools and programs designed to address the needs of students that typically can't be met in regular schools. Students who attend our programs are typically at risk of failure, and they have a whole list of criteria. And with, again, with our program, especially at Rock Bend, we have a waiting list, against, we have a waiting list this year. So not even everybody can get into these programs where we're trying to get kids through. So I've been talking with different committee members, board members, my colleagues, and Mr. Grundsath about just having some, some flexibility. And so in working with the education committee and the policy committee, we came up with an, an add. So just adding something that says, students that earn a minimum of two credits in a state-approved alternative program. So again, Rock Bend, summer school, credit recovery, maybe it's adult basic ed or Ashwa. So those students, they meet that state alternative criteria, and they've completed two credits in one of our programs, are eligible to waive a few credits, and that would include one math credit, one science credit, and up to two elective credits. We're still above and beyond the state minimum requirements, but we're offering some flexibility for those kids that are putting in the extra work in credit recovery, but still are not making it to walk across that stage. So I'm hoping that this reduces that stop-out, dropout rate. And again, we don't have very many kids that do, but when you personally know each one of them that does, it tugs at you and it just doesn't feel okay. So I know we can do better, and by making these adjustments, I think we can, we can do better. So. I don't know, a lot of you have already seen this, but if you have questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Can you repeat that one more time? The, so two credits, and then just say it, just say it again.
Yeah, so right now, St. Peter requires four math credits.
Okay.
So this would allow us to waive one, so they'd be required to do three, which meets the state requirements. Same with science. Right now, we require four. We'd be allowed to waive one, so three state requirements, and then waiving up to two electives. I can say right now at Rock Bend, we don't have the extensive electives that they have at the high school, so most of our students are working. And I mean, even, even this year, I have two students that are coming back to work for elective credits. If we could just waive those elective credits, then they can graduate and work. So it, it just gets them that diploma.
My question is, where do they get the diploma from?
It's still a St. Peter Public Schools diploma, within this policy.
There is a lot of good discussion, both with the policy committee and then with the education committee. And both brought something different to it. At the education committee, the discussion went more towards, you know, keeping it a St. Peter High School diploma and allowing students to walk in the big show, as it was referred to.
And I think one of the reasons that we, we were discussing this this much is because of the fact that there's a difference in credit. And the, the place that we landed is basically the diploma itself is, is a diploma itself. What really, really matters is the transcript, and that will all be very official and all, in the same, all of the information will, will be recorded there as to what they, what they followed as a coursework and so on.
Well, so you said you have, like at Rock Bend, students from all kinds of districts, right?
Primarily from St. Peter. We partner with Cleveland as our second school district. This year, again, I don't think we have any students from Cleveland. We have one open enrolling, I believe, from La Sure.
So do they get a La Sure diploma or a St. Peter diploma?
They can actually choose. In, like, last year, we had a Cleveland grad who walked and participated in the Cleveland ceremony and got a Cleveland diploma, and that was by her choice.
They have fewer credits there, don't they?
Yeah, they have twenty-four credits. So this does put us more in the ballpark of what our area schools are. Mankato, Cleveland are both at twenty-four. La Sure is at twenty-four. I believe it's TCU, though that's at twenty-three.
And that's for all students?
Yeah.
What we're saying here is that we're keeping twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven.
But we're using that state law that allows us to waive a couple in certain situations if they meet certain criteria.
Correct. And, you know, what I, what I actually like about this is saying that kids still have to do at least two credits in our credit recovery programming. So kids that, maybe they have failed two classes, they do their two credits of credit recovery, they're eligible to have credits waived, but now they don't need them because they made them up. So it's, it's also a good incentive to put in that work and regain that learning. And that's what's really important, is the learning that happens.
Absolutely. I'm really excited about this. I think it's a great.
I think I, I'm having a hard time with it. And part of that is that if you've had a student that's gone to St. Peter High School all four years and suddenly has a problem with one class that is a required class, like math or science, and so they can't walk. But you have someone that goes through your credit recovery program and only needs three credits in math and science, and they can walk. If I was the first student's parent, I'd be really upset.
But that first student still has an opportunity for credit recovery and to walk.
So what?
Next year.
But that's a state requirement.
Yeah.
I mean, we can talk about reducing our credits, you know, across the board for everyone. We could do that. But, but what this is, is we're using what the state guidelines, what the state tells us we can do without lowering it for all students.
Right. But they get the same diploma. If they meet the state requirements, maybe they should get a Minnesota state.
Well, my, my kid can get a C minus average in high school and get the same diploma as my other kid that had a four-point-oh or a four-point-five.
But they still successfully passed all those credits.
And there are opportunities for students in the situation in which you're saying, they're not going to find out just at graduation day that they've messed up that one credit or whatever. They're going to know, and there are remedies available. This is a remedy for students that, that when you look at the difference between what they're being offered and the twenty-seven, that's a hurdle. And those students oftentimes, you know, it's just too much, and they need to go and get a job or they need to quit. This is allowing them to finish their education quality level that the St. Peter Public Schools offer. At a, at a different credit thing, again, the transcript is, nobody, I don't believe people are going to say, can I see your diploma? They're going to want your transcript. And that transcript will have the information that, that a potential school or employer or whatever would have. So I, I think, I, I hear what you're saying, and that's a perception of it. I think when you read the policy, the requirements are pretty strict on who can actually receive the benefit of this credit approval. It's, it's pretty clear, I think, and it, it's more inclusive for success for students.
So going on the same line as Bill, are we afraid that we're going to water down? And I'm, I'm going to say, I'm a parent, and my child chooses not to do credit recovery and has twenty-four credits. And he just, he said, no, I'm not going to go. But he's passed three maths, he's passed three science. He can't graduate because he hasn't gone through the program, but he's got twenty-four credits. I'm probably going to be knocking on the door somewhere, saying, we got a lot of kids that are graduating now with twenty-three and a half or twenty-three. My kid's got twenty-four. I, I think there's some, I'm just, I totally get it. I'm just worried about those kids that have twenty-three and say, not going to Rock Bend, I don't want to. I've, I've got my three math, I got my three science.
Well, that's one reason we extended it to, to credit recovery, because a lot of kids will do that program. I also don't think it will be a lot of kids, you know, in, in thinking back to, like, I, I pulled some examples and shared them with the, the two committees. I think mostly the, the education committee, we really talked through them extensively. But I pulled five examples from the last five years. So I don't think it's going to be a lot of students. I think it's going to be, and again, we have a great graduation rate. It's not for a lot of students, but it is for those students that are, you know, have a mental health concern, they're pregnant or parenting. We have several students that need to work full-time because they're turning eighteen, and they, they have to work. You know, there, there are just lots of different reasons that we're losing kids. And again, this is to catch all of them, because right now, there's a few getting by us.
And I, and I see it. I, I'm just concerned about, it's, it's great that you're catching all those students. It's the ones that now the door is open. And, and it might not be wide open, it's just a crack. And, and I have, I have three, three students, two of which weren't good at math, one was. Wasn't worried about him getting four, but those other two, yep, you know, that, they had to work to get their fourth. And I just, I'm just a little cautious about saying three is good enough for this over here. Because I don't know if I would have gotten my one in the fourth math class, so.
I think that's why we have this down is for the first, this is, we've got a second reading on this, so yeah.
No, I, I get it.
Definitely, it's, it's one that we spent a lot of time in both committees, kind of going through all of those details, so.
Just some of the stuff that's.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Well, I haven't, I haven't said much, which is kind of weird for me, but I hear a lot of things. And number one I hear mostly is that we really need to look at that math requirement as a whole. The other thing I hear is that I think we're really worried about some of the kids at, at the top, we'll say. And I had kids at the, or kid at the top, in, in the fairness, maybe, of the kids that, that are at the top, and maybe somebody that's down here, maybe getting that same diploma. And it's, what I want to say is to maybe like, let's just all try to keep our eye on the prize, because maybe this person that's down here just needs just a little bit more help. Sometimes life just isn't always fair for everybody. And, and I, I mean, how do we feel about our kids that are, maybe have an IEP, and they maybe haven't taken all the same classes either, and they're all getting that same diploma? Do we, do we feel cheated because, because they haven't taken all those same classes either? Are we, are we feeling like they aren't, they shouldn't be getting the St. Peter High School diplomas either? And the other thing is, is do we really think when we're thirty years old that someone's going to look and say, I mean, I'm probably never going to get reelected now, but do we really think they're going to say, whoa, they graduated from St. Peter High School, they're way as much going to be better off than this person who graduated from Niklet? So, I mean, I think, I'm never getting reelected now, but oh, well. I, I just think like we're putting way too much focus on what that diploma says instead of the classes that we take and the opportun, we, tougher opportunities that we do with the classes that we take. And it's been fun serving you guys for three, four quarters years.
Well, you could say that about Mankato West kids, too.
We could say that about anything, yeah, so.
Correct.
Those are a lot of thoughts out there, so. And I really think we have to look at those four math credits. That's what I hear mostly.
It was a struggle just for me for a couple times.
Something that's popped into my head as we were discussing, we can look into it later, is on the transcripts, is it denoted if those credits came from an alternative program?
Yeah, I mean, Rock Bend ALC is listed as the school. So the header says St. Peter Public Schools, but the school says Rock Bend. So most of our students, it'll say St. Peter for ninth grade and tenth grade, and then it will say Rock Bend for eleventh and twelfth, if that's when they came to us. And summer school and credit recovery are also listed as ALC credit recovery.
And what you said was St. Peter Public Schools, not St. Peter High School, but St. Peter Public Schools.
I think so.
We're all St. Peter Public Schools.
Right. Well, this will come back to us for a second reading. If you have more to say on that, feel, feel free to contact one of, well, come back to the policy committee, so. Yep, or education, or me, or share your thoughts.
Thanks for hearing this one out.
Next informational item, building and ground.
Yes, Sharon Peterson, our operations and maintenance supervisor, was not able to be with us tonight, but she did supply you with a written report. And I'll just kind of highlight those projects that she was giving an update on at North. The carpet installation is complete. That was started last year, and with supply chain things, got behind schedule, and so that was finished up this, this summer. There are a few small repair projects on the floor at North. And at South, there was a restroom floor replacement, the middle school. Remember last spring, we were talking about some water damage that had occurred before we did the, the landscaping changes at the middle school to take care of that water. So that carpet was taken out and replaced with tile. It looks great. I know they did some mold mitigation in there as well. The middle school, the walls, if you've walked in through the main level, have been painted. It's a nice, I don't know, silvery gray color. It's nice. And also the new lighting and ceiling tiles were done as well. And in three of the early childhood programs, the food service updated some of their equipment in the serving line and the entry area to the cafeteria, and also some of the ceiling and LED lighting in the cafeteria as well. Installation of solar panels, as we've already talked about, went on the middle school and high school. Those are all functional. And that power is happily replacing some of the electricity that we would have gotten through, through the grid before. So it's pretty exciting. And then we had a matching safety grant, so we got some new mats in the entryway of the high school, or not the high school, the middle school, that have the logo on them. They're looking sharp. And then we spoke last spring also when we had our, the fire chief walk through that the auditorium curtains did not pass inspection and so had to be replaced. And so the mechanical parts of that have been replaced for the new curtain, and it is still in order. But that will make a big difference at the, in the look of the middle school. And we did hire two new custodians at the middle school who will be working evenings. We did meet them this morning at the big staff breakfast, and so we're excited to have them on board. And just that we, we're almost at the beginning of the year. Buildings are looking great. We still have some, some little projects to finish up before they arrive next week, but as usual, the, the floors are sparkling and smells like a clean school, most of the time.
Thank you, Megan. Summer programs update. Ms. Prep?
Everybody tonight, feels like summer tonight, and we're heading into fall, doesn't it? Yeah, so I had, I think I had given a brief report earlier in July, but just as we wrap things up, letting you know that we held ESY, Extended School Year, for pre-K through twelfth grade this year. And Ms., Ms. Sikora and Ms. Ingeldinger can talk about the upper levels if anyone has questions about that. We held Targeted Services Program, which falls under our ALC, for students in grades K through eight. And that was our four-day-a-week, four-hours-a-day, four weeks, our four-by-four-by-four program. Students received breakfast and lunch. We had about a hundred and fifty students attend and participate in that program overall. We also had transportation within the city of St. Peter and Cosota for those students. We, during that program, teachers did pre-assessments, post-assessments, completed a continual learning plan, which is required, and so we could see student growth. And of course, the goal of that is to curb that summer learning loss and also hopefully to make gains and prep for that fall coming in, so kids come, come in with that strong foundation again. Would really like to do a little shout-out to all the folks that worked in Targeted Services and Stars Academy this year. You know, it's always kind of a challenge to give up your time with your family. You know, it's always kind of a challenge to give up your time with your family in that summertime. But we have dedicated folks who came in and, and worked with our students, so it was good, good teamwork. So, that's just a little brief, but I am happy to answer any questions you might have about K eight. All right. And we look forward to it again next year. Hopefully, we'll be able to bring that, uh, Read and Feed Program back as soon as we become eligible again. So we'll see what summer holds for food service next year. I think I'm gonna stay up here while Doreen and Darren join for reports.
Awesome. Move right into reports?
Yeah. Um, so of course, we're, we had opening workshop today, it's great. And we thought, well, rather than all of us talking about that same thing, we'd each take kind of a topic to, to give you a little update on. So my topic is free meals for all. Um, and of course, that legislation went into place and we're rolling on that. So every student will receive a free breakfast and a, and a free lunch. They can purchase extra ente- entrees, extra meals, et cetera. There's a new vending machine at the high school, so students can purchase some of those à la carte items through the vending machine. And that's, uh, gonna work pretty slick, wouldn't you say, Ms. Engeldinger? Yeah, so we're excited about that, that change. Part of that, too, is to help us keep those lunch accounts kind of under control. And so even though students get a free meal, um, purchasing those à la carte items can add up pretty quickly. So feeling like that vending machine piece where you're needing to pay cash will help us keep those under control. We did, um, move balances. So if folks see that they had maybe a hundred dollar negative lunch account balance, and that's, that was zeroed out, it's now been moved to fees. So that money is, they're still responsible for that payment of those fees. But we wanted to clear that out, so we would have a really clean picture of what folks are charging and what their new balances are. So they were all notified of that, um, this summer. We do have free and reduced meal packets going out to people. And people might say, well, why am I filling that out when my student's receiving free breakfast and free lunch? And the reason for that is, is, there are a few reasons for that. Um, the district definitely generates funding for compensatory title and technology with those free and reduced lunch percentages. There are some scholarships, et cetera, that come our way for field trips and those types of things based on our free and reduced lunch data. And then, um, also, which is sort of a fun fact, our class in activities and athletics is also determined by our free and reduced lunch percentage at this time. So as the legislature rolls things out and these programs get into place, we might find that these things are generated in a different way. But for right now, we gotta keep folks filling those out for us, so we would encourage families to do that. Those also have been mailed out to families and they're available on our school district website.
I have a question about that.
Yeah.
The fees, that still complies with our federal requirements on meal debt, right? We're just calling it fees, so it's not like a student activity fee or another fee.
Correct. Yep, we just needed to move it into a different account to get that clear picture. But families were notified that that still becomes their responsibility, which is that, following that federal guideline.
Yeah, we can't take it out and use it for other stuff.
That we're not erasing it, yeah, yeah, exactly. Yeah, any, did I miss anything there, Ms. Grunseth?
I don't think so.
And then also just a little shout-out to families who have four-year-olds. We still have openings in preschool, our four-day afternoon for four-year-olds, and we would love, love, love to have them. We have a sliding fee scale and lots of scholarships available, so we want every child, uh, to have that experience prior to kindergarten. And so we'd love to have folks give us a call.
And to move on to South Elementary, we are currently sitting with a hundred and thirty-four kindergartners and a hundred and thirty-four first graders. So our class sizes in kindergarten are between eighteen and nineteen, and our first grade ranges from twenty-one to twenty-three students. So, um, we'll continue to enroll any students that come our way. Um, we also want to say thank you to the Friends of Learning. Um, that is a community-wide effort that provides any students that are in need of a back, of school supplies. They get a backpack full of supplies, um, those are distributed, uh, at Johnson Hall. So those families can come to school, have the supplies that their students need. Um, and we're just so grateful that we have that program within our, within our community. Um, today, we just had the best day, honestly, it was a fantastic kickoff. Um, the entire staff starts out up at Gus Davis, where there's a few jokes by Mr. Dougherty. Along with introduction of, of all, introductions of all of the staff members that have joined us. And it just is really a great time for us to, to get together and have everyone in the same spot at the same time. Um, we were able to hear a message from Superintendent Grunseth, and again, just, just, it's, it's one of my favorite times. We also had the honor of having the prestigious, um, board chair, Dr. Charlie Potts was our speaker. And I had so many people comment, I'm not just saying that because you're here. But honestly, people just saying that your talk really had a lot of meaning. Because you're a hometown boy who went away and chose to come back. And just, um, it really did make them reflect on the impact of, of, of what they do each and every day in those classrooms. So thank you for that, and.
Thank you.
Watch out, you may not want to go to the produce aisle next year, because it may track you down. I, I caught him in Hy-Vee when he was buying sweet corn to get into that. So, um, so thank you so much for doing that, you really did help make it, make it a meaningful day. Um, there are some other pieces that we will be all covering. And John's going to, I believe, John, no, Jan is talking about our, our social emotional learning program that'll go into play. And so, um, there's several things that we are going to be, uh, working on throughout the week, um, that we will be tight on. And then there's other things that are building specific.
All right, very good. Readings from North Elementary School, and I'll spare everybody the joke again, I had one, one, one shot at that, and we'll leave it at that. I know, exactly. I know, my staff, we, we kind of revisited it when we got back to North, and there was a handful that like, Dougherty, you should stick with what you know. Bring the pictures, the videos, so it's all, it's all good.
I liked it, I don't. I'm a big fan.
Anyway, um, yeah, so anyway, uh, start off with numbers. Uh, we've, uh, looks like we're about up twenty students at North compared to the end of the last year. We're at four-ten, closing the year out last year, and we're at, we're sitting at about four, four-hundred-and-thirty currently, I think. Uh, second grade, I know second grade is the biggest, a hundred-and-fifty-eight. Uh, third grade is one-thirty-four, and fourth grade is one-forty-eight, I believe. So, uh, that being said, I mean, our, our numbers in second grade are averaging right around twenty-five per section. So, which is, is an uptick in what we usually have at those grade levels, so. Uh, we'll definitely keep an eye on those. And I believe on your memo last week, you kind of talked about it, we do have students, you know, leaving. We don't, we really don't take them off the enrollment until we get a rec, um, request from another school district, so. We'll see, uh, where those sit. And then like Doreen mentioned, um, there's a, there are a number of activities that are pretty common, um, that are going on during workshop week throughout the buildings. Um, one, we'll start tomorrow, it's our PLC crews, so in the afternoon, uh, tomorrow, we'll have a two-hour PLC, same thing on Thursday. Um, it really, at the beginning of the year, at this point, we don't have our data back yet. We have to wait until we get through, uh, fall screening in order to really see what skills and talents, uh, students are bringing and then adjust accordingly. But really, it's about, um, in your team, resetting norms, um, kind of the roles that everybody's gonna play in those. Um, setting, setting up their, uh, meeting times and trying to just establish that culture and that framework. Two, um, you know, do the work, get to define what the students need to know and how we're gonna measure that and move forward. And then another piece that all the buildings, since we're a PBIS-wide school district, it's really building, um, norms of expectations. Like what everybody shares as, as far as what we expect out of staff and students at various spots in the, in the, in, in the building, in and around the building. Is that my timer?
Now you gotta tell the joke.
I'm so used, I'm so used to that with the admin team meetings, I'm kind of trained. So, um, at North today, we, uh, the PBS team did a phenomenal job. And all, all staff are there, custodians, cooks, um, even some of, we share, uh, our building with an MVAD classroom, and they participate in that as well. And the, the purpose behind that is to like common messaging. We all have generally the same expectation, so it doesn't confuse kids, right? No matter where they're at in the building, we're using that same language. And that takes some time to establish every year, so took time to do that today as well. I'm looking forward to the rest of the workshop week.
Thank you. To the big kids.
Uh, report from middle school. Uh, so August fourteenth and fifteenth, we had our new student orientations. Uh, that includes Jump Start, which is our fifth grade orientation, and our new-to-district orientation. Uh, Jump Start, we had a hundred-and-eleven-ish registrants. Um, and that's about eighty percent of that fifth grade class, which is really good. So we're excited to, to meet them and have them run through the building. Uh, lastly, I'd like to report on, uh, kind of piggybacking on what Mr. Dougherty was talking about with our collaborative teams. Uh, as you know, the middle school has gone through a bit of a transition in terms of the schedule. Uh, with the block schedule, we were able to have direct counterparts for just about all of our core classes. So for instance, uh, Mr. Dozy and Stephanie Evans taught the same exact content. The loss of the block has created a bunch of singletons. Uh, so as a building, we've really talked about how we can best meet the needs of our teachers and our students. And we've decided to shift our formal collaborative teams from departments to grade levels. So it's more of a elementary model in that mindset, uh, where teams will be really focused on common teaching strategies in the world of like reading, writing, listening, and speaking. Um, so very exciting, uh, new for us, uh, but it will really push our kids and enable our kids to have those skills that they need to be successful at the next level.
All right, um, at the Ashwell Learning Academy, the number may sound small, but we are up to twenty-six students. Last year, we were at the highest at eighteen. So this is gonna feel like a significantly larger cohort of students. Um, we have added a teacher to our group, so that's going to be really helpful in maintaining really small class numbers. So at twenty-six, and, um, today, I spent most of my time at the Ashwell Learning Academy with that, with our new teacher group. Um, just talking about literacy and the science of reading. Um, last year, we had a reading goal that we didn't meet, so we're really gonna be focusing in on that. Our students struggle with reading, many of them have had gaps in school. And so it's just something that we feel is really important. Um, Rock Bend is also at twenty-six, we've got a waitlist of two or three, depending on somebody's decision. Um, we start school at Rock Bend on the thirtieth, we do conferences on the twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth. We feel it's really important to talk to our students about their graduation plan, because many of them have varying needs. So sitting down with each student and parent and really going through what that graduation plan is, so that they can meet their goal. So we start on the thirtieth at Rock Bend. Um, I'm working with the student support team on the implementation of Character Strong, our new SEL curriculum. And tomorrow is really the big kickoff, Doreen almost stole my thunder. Um, so we're meeting in sites tomorrow, the student support team is gonna be leading some initial conversation about the why and how this really connects to the strategic plan. Then we have virtual training, um, there's gonna be a pre-K five group, a middle school group, and then a high school group. So different trainings by level. Um, and then some planning time for each staff, um, to come together and really think about implementation. And then I'm excited, because we have some designated time on, in September, on our professional development day, to really come back and, and further talk about implementation and kind of iron out the details, so should be good.
I have updated numbers for, uh, the high school grade levels as well. Um, we're sitting at about, uh, give or take a handful who maybe haven't let us know that they're not coming back, and some that are hopefully coming. Uh, we have seven-hundred-and-twenty kids. Uh, our eighth grade, our ninth grade will be a hundred-and-eighty-four, tenth, one-eighty-six, eleventh, one-seventy, and our seniors, one-eighty. So our numbers are staying really strong at the high school, so happy to see that. Um, do not forget, at the high school, we're starting on Monday at eight-twenty-five, um, so we're hitting the ground running right away. We just like to get straight to the learning, everybody. And our ninth grade orientation, and ninth grade and new student orientation, uh, we have two sessions on Wednesday, one at three and the other at six.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Um, mailings, I know that I think, and I should know this, um, went out, did they go for all of the buildings to all? No. Sorry. Talk to me about mailings to families. Somebody asked me, and I believe it was a middle school family, has mailings gone out?
So the mailing, uh, what we did is we ran a report in Infinite Campus, and we can see who has an email on file in Infinite Campus. And if you were a family that did not have an email on file, you got a paper copy of the mailing.
Okay.
If you have an email on file, you received an electronic copy.
Got it, okay, so that's that.
And if, that was the first time we've done it that way, so if there's feedback, please let me know. We were really struggling with that decision.
Well, I don't really know, like, they're just kind of used to getting that, all that colorful paper, and then you fill it out, and then you come. And so I think it was a little like.
Yeah, and the reason we shifted away from that, it, it felt like we were the only building who still did that. And the time commitment to stuff those envelopes was pretty great.
Mm-hmm. You know, it's just a learning curve, right? As we move all to these digital things, right? So. I said I didn't know, but, because I didn't know really didn't mean much, but I would try to find it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Superintendent Grunseth.
I guess that makes it my turn. Well, I said it, uh, this morning, and I say it every year, Happy New Year, everybody! It's the teacher's New Year. And, uh, again, I just want to echo that this morning was, was amazing. It is just about my favorite day of the year, because it is the one time that everyone who is part of St. Peter Schools is in the same place at the same time. Whether, uh, it's our maintenance crew, or our food service crew, or our paraprofessionals, or our office support, or teachers, administrators, we're all together. And there is just this happy buzz about the place, as people are greeting each other, uh, that maybe they haven't seen all summer. They're sharing their adventures and they're sharing their excitement. And this morning, they were all sharing their appreciation for Dr. Potts and his amazing voice, uh, that comes through in his, in his storytelling, and it was really a heartfelt message that I, too, all day long heard that, um, Dr. Potts was probably one of the best speakers we've had, so thank you again for your heartfelt message. And I think that's what made the difference, is that it was personal and personal to St. Peter, so thank you for that. And, um, Mr. Dougherty needs to work on his joke-telling skills, I think, because it was like a fifteen-minute joke. And when it was done, it was like. Just like that.
I audibly laughed.
You did, you did.
LOL.
I was actually laughing so hard, I was crying, so I didn't really notice, but, uh, it's, it's appreciated. And the point is that the, the morning is filled with really heartfelt, serious messages, but it's also filled with a lot of laughter. And that laughter comes with the relationships that are palpable in our, in our community, in our school community. And, uh, I really have grown to appreciate that. And it wouldn't be the same if Mr. Dougherty didn't, uh, poke fun at me all morning, so it was, it was great fun. I do want to, uh, reiterate that high school starts on Monday for the high school. But it's Wednesday for the elementary and middle schools, because we have those first two days of conferences. Really an important time for, uh, families to come in, meet their teacher, kind of learn about, uh, the expectations for the year and how things are going to operate. So please, um, make sure that you're checking in with your schools, uh, North, South, and the middle school during conference time. And I also want to mention that with school starting, it is time to pay double attention as you're out and about driving in the morning and at those times at the end of the school day. Because our students aren't always, uh, watching for cars, and so it, we have to be really diligent about watching out for them. Whether they are at the bus stop or riding their bikes to school or walking to school. Um, especially as we get a little farther into fall, and sometimes it can still be dark when they are out at those bus stops. Uh, please be watching for them. I especially ask that people be, uh, mindful as they come through the newest roundabout. I've, you know, there's a crosswalk at each of those, and it's pretty, pretty far into that roundabout. And when students see, uh, a walking zone, they tend to just cross and not think about cars that are not just going straight through, but coming all the way around the roundabout. So please be mindful as school starts to watch for kids. And, uh, yeah, that's, that's it, that's it.
All right. Round the table, Mr. Leonard.
I don't have anything.
Ms. Dewey.
Clearly, the St. Peter High School diploma really did mean a lot of extra for you, Charlie, so. I shouldn't really have not said that, so.
No.
I'm just teasing, no, I don't have anything.
Uh, good luck to all the teachers. Uh, good luck to all the teachers. Those who were there this morning can attest to the energy that was in that room. I mean, it just felt great, so very excited to see the energy that they'll bring into the classroom starting Monday.
I'd just like to echo everyone who's congratulated you on your fine performance today. It was very heartwarming.
Boy, you take the show on the road.
Appreciate it.
Well, I have to say that as a veteran of more than a few workshop weeks, I have to, this has to be like top of the mark right here, it was great, because first of all, it's one of my favorite days, I think, in the year. The next one being when the kids get in the buildings. But to see all of the teachers and all of the staff ready, just pulling together, and I have to thank all of the administrators. Darren, I thought the joke was great, our team laughed, we, we laughed, we got it. So don't ever lower your standards on that one. And I want to say thank you to Sarah and all the people who worked so hard to get it put together. It was just really a super event, thank you.
All right, we've got some upcoming meetings. Policy Committee, Wednesday the thirtieth at four PM, though that might end up changing, and we'll publicize that. HR Committee, Thursday the thirty-first at four PM in the conference room at the middle school. We have a joint meeting with the city council, the entire board with the city council, Wednesday, September sixth at five thirty in the senior center, in the community center. Education Committee, Friday, September eighth at eight AM at the district office. Business Committee, Wednesday, September thirteenth at four o'clock in the district office. And then right back here for the regular board meeting, Monday, September eighteenth, six thirty PM in the governor's room. Any other meetings I missed? Entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Good job, Charlie.